Alright. Part 2. Yeah, so I just had a stream a little bit ago about the previous module, so. Why is this speaking? Seriously? Um, yeah, so I had a stream about the previous module, so we're doing this AZ500 part 1, but actually the identity and access. So I did this one. I secure your solutions with Active Directory. And now we're going to do implement hybrid identity on the stream. So let's go. If you want to follow along, I have the, that's the link. I'm just gonna put the link here. It's in in the comments. It's in the comments. It's also in the description. So if you want to follow along, I had a recommend you do that and not just watch me. And yeah, so let's go. Alright, let's start. Let's see. It's P1 available now. Yay. Yeah, in the previous session, I tried to get a free trial of P1, but I don't want to take. Sorry, one second. Alright, cool. Alright, hybrid identity is the process of connecting your on-premise Active Directory with your Azure Active Directory. You do this to enable singles accounts to enable single account to have access to resources on premises and in the cloud. There are many other security benefits as well. Um, okay. My fear is that I do not have an on-premise Active Directory account. But we'll see. We'll see. We shall see. Alright, so basically the way it works is you have a user and they can use their same devices with all the cloud stuff, right? So AD Connect provides the following features: password hash synchronization, a sign-in method that synchronizes the hash of a user on-premise ID password with Azure AD, pass-through authentication that allows you, a user to use the same password on-premise and in the cloud, federation integration. Federation is an option, an optional part of Azure AD Connect and can be used to configure a hybrid environment using an on-premises AD FS infrastructure. And also, hey Boris. Hey. And also, um, it also provides AD FS management capabilities such as such beginner synchronization responsible for creating users and groups, as well as make sure that the information for your on-premise users and groups match the cloud as well as the hashes and health monitoring to provide monitoring in a central location. Okay, connect health monitoring, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, so. AD Connect health is an agent. Authentication option. Alright, choosing AD authentication method is important and is one of the first important decisions when moving to the cloud, as it will be the foundation of your cloud environment, and it is difficult to change at a later date. You could choose cloud authentication, which includes Azure AD password hash synchronization and AD pass through authentication, and you can also use federated authentication when where Azure AD hands off authentication process to hands off the authentication process to a separate trusted authentication system, such as on-premise AD FS. Cool. Okay. Alright, do you need an on-premise Active Directory integration? If yes, if no, then you should cloud only, obviously. If you need an on-premise Active Directory integration, then you do need to use cloud authentication, password protection, and your authentication requirements. Yes, pass-through. If you need on-premise Active Directory integration, but you did not need to use cloud authentication, password protection, and then. Okay. If you need Active Directory integration, have an existing federation provider, and your authentication requirements are not natively supported by AD, then you'll use federation. Okay. Cool. I don't really know what password hash. Password authentication, okay. Yeah, so this one, yeah, if you only need cloud, then you don't need any other type of authentication. I do need on-premise Active Directory integration. Then you do need to use. If you, what? Is it me or is this sentence just like, not really well phrased? If you do need on-premises Active Directory integration, then do you need, okay, if you need the integration, do you need to use cloud authentication, password protection, and your authentication requirements are natively supported by AD? Yes. If you do need, I don't remember, but you do not need use cloud authentication, password protection. This is complicated. Password hash, password 1, it goes through, cool. How does it work? In the background for the password synchronization components, the user's password hash from on-premise Active Directory passes it to Azure. Okay. And it's the same sign-in, not single sign-on. The user authenticates against two separate directory services. Obey, obate, obate. I don't know how to say this word. Use the same username and password. Solution provides a simple alternative to AD FS implementation. Yeah, so single sign-on is ready, you use the same sign-on everywhere. But, yeah, that's not. You use the same authentication service. Alright, AD pass-through authentication. One second. Sorry, but that the dogs. Alright, anyway. Alright, implements pass-through authentication. So user sign-in. Okay. You sign, it's basically you sign into Azure Active Directory, then it pass through the authentication to your agent, and it goes to your Windows Active Directory Service, and yeah. So, so yeah, so basically you use Active Directory as a relay, Azure Active Directory as a relay for your on-premise authentication. I'm assuming this is great until your on-premise server is not available. It supports user signing to all web browser-based application into Microsoft Office client application that use modern authentication. Signing username can be either on-premise, the on-premise default username, or another attribute configured in AD Connect. One second. Works seamlessly with conditional access feature. Integrated with cloud-based service password management. Multi-force environment is supported. That's good. PTA, password authentication is a free feature, so you don't need to pay anything else. Let me add it. Enable via AD Connect. Lightweight on-premise agent. And. Boris is back. This, this module is really boring. And protects on-premise. Okay, cool. Federation with Azure AD. Why is this so long? Is it because it's just so boring that people just don't want to do it? Federation is a collection of domains that have an established trust. The level of trust may vary, but typically includes authentication. It is necessary evil. Authentication almost always includes authorization. A typical federation might include the number of organizations that have established trust. Trust for shared access to a set of resources. Okay, if you decide to use federation with Active Directory Federation Services, you can optionally set up password hash synchronization as a backup in case you want, in case your AD FS infrastructure fails. Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna say, okay. It's probably authentication decision tree. See Boris, this is one where I would have wanted to do 3D printing instead of this. I mean, most of them do, are, but this one in particular. Do you want Azure AD to handle sign-in? I'm not gonna go over every decision. You can. You can look at it yourself. So if I want, I mean, this is good that they have this. It makes it so much better than. I had two donuts. I had two donuts this morning and avocado toast from Dunkin'. I'm all my energy needs, so. I'll make it through. Two more. Maybe, maybe, maybe I'll do an extra one for fun. But yeah. Okay. Details on decision question. Azure AD can handle. Okay, Azure AD can handle sign-in for users without relying on on-premise components to verify passwords. Okay, Azure AD can handle a few assignments to trust authentication provider such as Microsoft's AD FS. You need to apply, if you need to apply user-level Active Directory security policies such as account expired disabled, account password expired, account locked out. Sign-in hours for each user signed in is Azure, Azure AD requires some on-premise components, okay? Sign-in features not natively supported by Azure AD, sign-in using a smart card. On-premise MFA server. Smart cards of certificates, third-party authentication solution, all multi-site on-premise authentication solution. Yep. So, I mean, this one we saw in the previous module, it's in preview. I think smart cards are in preview. Certificate, yeah, definitely not. The, the, the way a certificate would work, if you're not familiar with that, is you basically install a certificate on the machine the same way you have HTTPS certificates. Says this is a valid machine, or this is a valid certificate, whatever, and. I, I, I will answer that. I know the answer to that. Certificates, it just passes the certificate to the authentication service without having to use a username or password. MFA server. Why would you use an on-premise MFA server? Well, I used to work somewhere where instead we, we had a two-factor authentication for every single server we signed into. So basically this, it was dual login. Let me see if I can find. Duo. This one. And basically the advantage of that is that you would use your, it would enforce the authentication. I, I, I think honestly, I think when they mean on-premise MFA server, I wouldn't be surprised if they mean third-party MFA server in general. I think they, they support Microsoft, but they don't support other vendors. Okay, well then my question to you is, yeah, does it work with Azure AD? That would be the question, if you know, if you have it. But, yeah, so Duo would force that, and I don't know that there's any way to do that with Microsoft. I don't know that there is. It's possible that it exists, but I do not know that it's possible. Oh, it does support it? Okay, wow. Well then, legacy, right? That's why you would have it, legacy. Okay, cool, then. Thank you Boris, we learned something new today. I really appreciate it. Yeah, no, it's good. Alright, so third-party authentication solution, yeah, just, I mean, such as the AWS directory or what is it, the Mac one? Open directory or something like that, anyway. Okay, Azure AD protection requires password hash sync regardless of which sign-in method you choose to provide the users with the credential reports. Yeah, organization can fail over password health sync primary method. This is just on Joth tree. I think they're just saying it works with on-premise if you want to. These dogs are just. Alright, dogs are being loud. What was I gonna say? Oh yeah, I was, isn't sure, is that it as a starting point to understand your options? I know I'm slurring. It's because I'm tired, not because I'm drunk. I wish I was drunk, but no, they're pissed. They are, they are. Family members are going out and they're like, no, no, no. Where are you going? You're supposed to be in the house all day with me cuddling, so. Yeah, so there, there's many options. It really depends. Azure AD B2C is also an option, whatever. But my brain is just not. Having a cloud-based password reset utility is great, but most companies still have on-premises directory where their users exist. How does Microsoft support keeping traditional on-premise Active Directory domain services in sync with password changes in the cloud? Well, it's password write-back. Given the name before I read, I'm assuming it means that they write the password back to your domain service. They pass the hash, the hash of the password to your domain service and then encryption, all that stuff. Okay, enforcement. Provide enforcement of on-premise Active Directory domain password policies. That's actually pretty good. So you can define all these policies in one place. To historicity, complexity, age, password filters. Azure AD feedback. Synchronous operation, cool. So that means it writes immediately as soon as you change it to everywhere that it needs to write it to. Password changes from the Access Panel and Microsoft 465. Okay, pretty cool. Supports password write-back when an admin resets them from the Azure portal. Okay, and doesn't require any inbound firewall rules. I thought I had it done. Doesn't require any inbound firewall rules. I do have dogs. Look at this. Hi. They're, they're leaving you. They're leaving you. Oh, it's tough. It's tough. You have a very tough life. Do you wanna, you wanna learn about Azure with me? Alright, to use SSPR. Hi. Finally, I know, but I knew you want, you wanted to see her. Look at her. Attack! What is SSPR? Did I, did I miss? What is SSPR? Oh. Where is it? It's password, self-service password reset. Okay. Knowledge check. Alright, check your knowledge. Alright, let's let's try that. That's actually good, a lot faster than the other one. I tell how does wants to reduce password reset support tickets? Use no password authentication. Okay, you suggest having users sign into both on-premises and cloud-based applications using the same password. Should that make sense? Your guys, oh, your organization does not plan on using Azure AD identity protection? So which feature will be easiest to implement given the requirements? Password hash. I'm gonna say password hash. This, this, do this, start a YouTube channel and and study, schedule a live, stick to it and do it. That's, I do not have the motivation to study either. Promise it. I, I hate, I am a horrible student. Horrible, horrible student. This is just me putting obstacles in my way so that I don't have to. I can't get out of it, right? I said I would do it, I would study, I would look at this, and because there's people who are here keeping me accountable for this live stream, I can't just be like, eh, I don't feel like it. So my solution for things I don't want to do is put obstacles in your way so you can't get out of it. You know, what, you, the, the way I find it for myself, sometimes I get motivated to do things. And, but sometimes I'm motivated to do them, but not right now. I'm motivated to do things in the future. So when you're motivated to do things in the future, make yourself accountable for them. Force yourself to do it, and then it will work. So. Yeah, it's, it's so boring. This one, this module in particular is extremely boring, so. Yeah. I, I'm gonna try to do more of those those live streams, studying on more certifications. I have five certifications that I plan to take this year, so AZ500, which is this one, the security. Terraform Associate. What do I have? 700, Azure 700, which is the networking one. Then I have Azure 400, which is DevOps, and 305, which is. 305 is. Architects. Wow, this morning. Oh, I wanna know. They, they're all boring. I don't know that there's any certification exam that is not boring. I think they're all pretty much on the same level of boring. So yeah, but yeah, so I have those and I'm gonna study in public for all of them, so. I was asked to do 204. If I feel like it, because I have five certifications to do, if I feel like it, no promise. I will go over the 104 and 204 as quickly as I can, just as a refresher for myself and to help you guys do that. Wait, I saw a comment that I liked. Wait, where's Boris's? Yes, that too. Do, if you schedule the exam, you can't get out of it, right? So. I mean, be sure you're like somewhat ready for it, right? Be almost halfway through your studying before you do that, because you can't, if, if you, if you don't have any idea what the certification is about, it's gonna be painful to, to study for everything that you, it's just all brand new. But yeah, study, schedule the exam and you can't get out of it. And yeah, that's the idea. I'm gonna be your study buddy. So keeping you accountable for this, especially if you study the same certification I studied, so. You have 4, 200, 204, okay, 204, yep. SC200, 300, AZ500, PL. That's a lot. What is SC200? Oh, okay, so you're, so it's all security, basically. And the access. But those are on-site, right? Oh no, they are not. Huh, okay, alright, what do we have? There's so many, PL900. Platform fundamentals. And DP500. You got found them. Actually, I may have either this one or the AI one, too, that I'm just curious about. Alright, cool. It's fun, but stop distracting me. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. This is good. Please interact with me. This, this one is it's especially, especially boring. Okay, which tool can you use to synchronize AD passwords with on-premise Active Directory? I'm, I'm, I'm saying password write-back, right? Okay, AD, Azure AD supports which of the following security protocol? Open ID Connect. AD Connect. Synchronize AD password, which tool? Oh, it's, okay, you're right. AD Connect is the tool, password write-back is the feature. I'm just gonna say OAuth. Right? I know it's not Kerberos, 100%. Okay, I'm gonna say OAuth right now. Which of the following is an authentication option that integrates with Azure Active Directory? Requiring you to use several different, different methods like. Active Directory. Sometimes like, I feel like some of these questions are not necessarily like in the things you just studied, but also I don't treat the whole thing, so it's, maybe it's there. Alright, any objections to the answer of these questions? I'm satisfied with them. Alright, go, let's see. Oh no! Okay, what was this? Okay. You suggest having users sign into both using the same password. Your organization does not plan on using identity. So which features? Yeah. Yeah. Password authentication? I mean, password means it's not, I'm just gonna say federation, you can sign into anywhere, right? Let's give it a shot, let's give it a shot. No! Okay, well then. By process of elimination. Alright, why is it the good answer? I just want to see the answer. Password authentication allows user to sign into both on-premise and cloud-based application by using the same password. Password authentication sign in users, signs users in by validating their password directly against, against on-premise Active Directory. PTA does not provide Azure AD identity protection in the credential report. Okay. Alright, cool, I guess. Wouldn't both have worked, though? Which, which would be easiest to implement, given the requirements? Okay. Because there's no synchronization, this is basically like, hey, is this correct? Okay, cool, I get it. I get it. So the key word here was easiest. I think password hash would have worked too, but it's not the easiest. Okay, continue. Summary. Look at this. Hybrid identity helps connect your on-premises Active Directory to your Azure. Okay, cool. Not able to deploy, I'm not, I'm not able to deploy or configure a disconnect or configure password hash synchronization or implement password authentication, like... I mean, I'm sure I could figure it out, but not very hands-on module this one. But yeah. Alright, it's... Let's see if we can do here, since we have some time. See what, what this looks like. These dogs swear. This one in particular is just... Okay, so basically you download this and it will be like... Then you deploy that on your machine, okay? Stage rollout, authentication on-premise. Okay, federation. So password authentication. So I guess you just have to install the agent and just say, good to go. Okay. Yeah, that was a boring one. That was boring. Alright, cool. Well, I'm just gonna go... Yeah. Yeah, it's easier on, on the laptop. I, 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 I don't watch stuff on my phone, it's just too complicated. Um, okay, cool. So we've done previous module, we did this one, we just did this one. And now 1:00 PM, we're going to do this one. Deploy Azure AD identity protection. Okay, prerequisite none. Explore this exercise. See, I, I like this because there's like tasks you can do. Cool, 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 cool. Alright. So that's it for this one. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna call it, dogs are barking. Carolyn is tired and hungry. Yeah. Thank you for coming, everyone. I think, I actually don't know what this is streaming in. Hoping it's... Yeah, it's 720p. Kinda sucks, but, oh well. But my streams are the, the lowest quality videos on my, my channel. I try to put everything in 4K, 60 FPS, so... Yeah, that, that might be a, a different experience. No, it's, it's, it's not just you. Yeah. Alright, I'm done for this one, I'm just gonna... I'm gonna chill, I'm gonna do some 3D printing until 1:00. It's not gonna be done by then, but... Yeah. Alright, see you at 1:00 or see you later. Thank you for coming. Thank you Boris, always, always good to have you on the stream. You really make this whole thing much more navelly, so I appreciate it. Post pics, I did, I will, edit a little mold here. Butterfly mode, I'm gonna put... I'm gonna make fairy lights with butterfly using epoxy, so... Yeah. Fun, fun stuff, and I don't know where Pedro went. Oh, Pedro, look. Pedro, got him from Thingiverse. It's not what it's called, it's not called Pedro in Thingiverse, but it's Flower Park. We call them Pedro. Yeah, I have another mold. And I did, I did the torture test. It's actually doing much better than I thought it would in, in the overhangs. The writing is crap, though. But anyway, cool. Which printer did I get? I got AnyCubic S, I3Mega. Did you say what it is? S, yeah, AnyCubic S, it was like 200 something. Nope, not Prusa, not Ender, AnyCubic. It's actually pretty good, it, it does pretty well. I like that only the platform moves for the X and Y, as opposed to the whole print head, so... Pretty nice. Well, the print head moves in X, the platform moves in Y, but yeah. Cool. Alright, well, I'll see you guys, whomever joins at 1:00 PM. I'm gonna end the stream now. Yeah, it looks very keen. I, I, I know I'm talking, but I don't show this. Okay. Alright, I'm gonna end this stream because I'm so tired. I just need to, to rest my voice and rest myself and then maybe I'll be able to do the next module without falling asleep. Alright, see you 1:00 PM.